Yeah, I'm gonna call the Culver Town Council meeting is 6:30 for Tuesday, August 24th, 2021. Roll call, please.
Mr. Clevinger?
What?
Mr. Githens?
Present.
Mr. Ham?
Present.
Mr. Charlie?
Present.
Mr. West?
Present.
It's all staying with the pledge.
I believe this is the body of the United States of America and to the Republic, which is the chance, one nation, on the ground, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I want everyone to know that this meeting is being broadcast via Microsoft Teams and is being recorded. Participation in the meeting is your consent to be recorded and to the rebroadcast of the recorded meeting. Recorded meeting will be available for viewing on the town's YouTube channel. At this time, everyone in the room, would you please make sure your cell phone is turned off during the meeting? Moving on. Approval of the minutes from the meeting on August 10th.
I would move that we approve the minutes from August 10th, 2021.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion made by Rich and seconded by Bill Ham that we approve the August 10th meeting minutes. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries.
Could you also approve the executive meeting as well?
I would move that we approve the minutes from the executive session on August 10th, 2021.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion made by Rich and again seconded by Bill Ham to approve the executive committee minutes from August 10th. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries. We're gonna wait since the July financials just went out late today and we'll give all a chance to review them and we'll approve them in first meeting in September. Moving on, regional stellar park project. Shannon, welcome.
Well, hi, it's good to see you, Ken, and then there's some new faces here. I haven't been here for a while, this saddens me. Oh, my goodness, so I'm Shannon McClove. And historically, I have worked with the community for, well, it's been probably 15 years on your federally funded projects, helping your grant applications and then do the administration of those projects. When Culver was designated stellar in and of itself, we completed two projects, that'd be in the beach lodge, and then we did some improvements in Cavalier Park. And so we kind of sat tight for a while until you all finished up the housing and what have you. And then you jointly worked with Marshall County and were part of their regional stellar plan. And as you know, Marshall County had been designated in 2019. And of those CBG funds, those federal funds, the town of Culver was allotted a sum of money to implement yet another project. So that is why I am here tonight. We're getting close to getting that ready for application and getting it into the Office of Community and Rural Affairs for review. So with that, before we began the public hearing process, I just wanted to make sure that we're all on the same page before we go and advertise and host our public hearings. So what I have prepared is just a little quick snapshot of where I think the projects that the elements of the project that I've been told, our project budget and a time schedule. And I just want to see if you're all on board with that, okay? So let's go through this, I've got a handout here. You're welcome. Hopefully, I made enough copies.
Thank you.
I think so.
Thank you.
I think I've got enough.
Thank you.
And then Jenny, and then I'm gonna leave one here that you give to Amber, and then the one that I'm gonna pop off of will get to Shannon, okay?
Sounds good.
All right.
Good.
So the first thing is that the Troyer group had met with you in the park board and had collectively gone through the project elements. And then Troyer had provided those elements to me. Something went down the wrong pipe there. And they provided those elements to me. And then in turn, I put together the environmental paperwork. And we've gotten the environmental out on these project elements. So we have project element number, project element A, which is the creation of an outdoor event space. It's all here in the Culver Park down by the lake. So we're gonna do this outdoor event space with some concrete walks so that basically kind of is in that picture, these are just examples, but it'll be able to be used for vendors and farmers markets and what have you. Project element B is the installation of a plaza area around the main entry of the existing depot building. So they're gonna do some bricklayers and some landscape elements. Project C is the existing playground. We're gonna upgrade some of that playground equipment and put some new things in there. Project D, we are going to install a large rope swing in the play area for the kiddos. And then we're gonna put in a natural area with some holders and whatnot. And these are all just example pictures of where the kids can climb up and use natural elements versus the plasticware. We also then are gonna do some, we're gonna install some swinging benches that I guess will overlook the lake area and then put in a bocce ball court. So is that, those are the elements that I've been given. Anybody know anything different or have we scratched any of those? Or are we still on board to try to do all of that?
Yeah, Amber went through some pre-design plan. These plans, she liked Lion's Glove and making sure because this is so close to their end of the park. So as part of that preliminary phase that goes into the application Shannon will submit, there will still be, after Shannon submits the application and Oprah awards the funds, there will still be a design phase at which there can be public input. So, you know, not only would Lion's Club have an opportunity to come back and look at the final design, but anyone in the public can show up for that and we'll advertise for that.
So there can be minor modifications, but for the most part, the application, we have to put together a scope of work and this is what we understand it to be today, okay? So, the project schedule that I am working on is on that second page down there at the bottom. The grant application process is a, it's gonna require that we conduct two public hearings prior to submitting the application. And we've already got one scheduled for September 14th. And that actually should hit the paper on the first, I think that's Wednesday or Thursday. Whenever you're the Culver citizen, the next edition, it will be in that newspaper. So Karen, or Jenny, just, or Karen, either or. Verify when you see that citizen that it's in there. And if it's not, then let me know so that we can retweak if need be. But we have gotten confirmation back from the paper. And as soon, and we're gonna let a week go and then we're gonna submit the next one because I didn't want to do them both at the same time, just thought it might get confusing for the paper. So then we'll be advertising the one on the 28th. We then in turn hopefully can wrap up the application and get it in first of October. It's taking them about 30 days to review those applications. And because this is stellar funds, the funding is already earmarked. It's not like our normal ones that it's competitive process. The only thing that may be is that if there's some threshold issue or they want additional information. But, you know, I don't anticipate that. We then will have to, I have to, once it's awarded, I have to get a bunch of paperwork into the state. And then we gotta publish our Fonzie, which is finding of no significant impact from an environmental standpoint. That requires a public comment period. And while that's going on, the town will execute their grant agreement. And then the state begins their comment period on the environmental. Once we have received the environmental release, we then will be able to advertise for bid, put the project out for bid. So I'm looking at kind of like a January 10th and 17th and some of these, you know, this is what we're working on, it's subject to shift around a little bit. But we're hoping to be able to publish the advertising for bid, which is a good time to bid a project in early January, right after the holidays and then people are looking for their work, you know, spring work. We'll do a pre-bid and then try to hit the bid opening to correspond with your February meeting, your first February meeting in 2022. And then we hope to get, we'll have to do a little bit more paperwork. And then we hope that we will be able to officially award your bid at your March meeting in 2022 and get things started soon there. So I don't know really what the construction time period is gonna be. That'll be something that Mike will fill you in after they get the design done. So that'll come down the road, but we're hoping that we can actually get started in March. And I would say that by the end of the summer with the elements that I'm seeing, I would think by the end of the summer, we'd be able to have that completed.
Is there, is there a weekly day requirement for Oprah on the, I mean, I can't worry about doing this during the summer.
We could actually back up the bidding and we could bid it in the summer and start it in the fall. Because once our grant is awarded, we have 18 months to complete. So once, how about we put that down, Rich, once we get the grant awarded, then I normally like to do a golf meeting where the engineers in the room and Park and you guys, and we really talk through these. But ideally, this is how it would happen and if we can stay, but I understand you don't want to have work going on when you've got people in the park. Nice thing is though, it's not gonna really affect, well, I guess it will because over there, the farmer's market area is by the hamburger theater. And so, so we can push things back. We've got 18 months from, once we get the application in to finish the project. And if we don't want to bid it out immediately, we can delay that bid six months or whatever. And we can even delay it further, I have to get some modifications and what have you, but.
I mean, the good news is it's not a building, you know, that mass of construction.
It's not gonna be like, like the beach lodge, that was a huge undertaking. Where I think they could stage this in ways where it'd only be disrupting portions of the park. Where the beach lodge, I mean, it pretty much, the restrooms were gone, there was large, the parking lot and all of that. So, but when we get closer to the bidding stage, we'll reevaluate and see if we need to maybe push things back.
It does, yeah. You'll see in my report, we are required to do one because ours expired. And we had checked to see if we could use the Marshall County one, we cannot. We have to just provide the service areas Culver itself. So we will need to have Shannon's service to do that.
And I'm gonna talk about that in a second. So, but this is kind of, kind of where, what I'm looking at and what I'm gonna present to the public. Keep in mind, it's subject to change. The only thing that I really want to try to keep within a 30-day window is that's the middle of that application. I want to get your application in October 1st, November 1st by the latest. So that, that's, I want to get it in this year so that we can rock and roll. Okay, all right. The next page kind of details what our, what the budget is looking like. I think Mike may have presented a budget to Amber. The numbers for the most part are the same, the bottom lines are definitely the same. We're looking at a total project cost of $600,000. It's a $480,000 grant. And then the town will be matching that with $120,000. And from what I gather, $60,000 of that will be coming from your park fund and then $60,000 will be coming from the redevelopment mission.
Yeah.
So, so I think it's a 60. So you're gonna be putting in 120 and you're gonna get 480. So that's what we will be applying for. The rough estimate on the construction cost is about 486. And then you get 114,000 in miscellaneous soft costs, architectural fees, grant administration fees, advertising those things, and you can kind of see how that all plays out. One of the things that Mike had questioned me, and I think Jenny and me has said something, is about procurement of consultants. Since the grant, since the local match will be paying 100% for the architectural services, you could at any time enter into an agreement with Troyer. Because we don't have to go through procurement because it's your local fund that are paying for that. And I believe that in order, I kind of went through this schedule with Mike, talking to him about bidding this project in January. And he said the sooner he could get under contract and start getting the design completed, the better. So I told him, well, then why don't you put together a contract and get in front of the board in the next few weeks, few meetings? So I would anticipate that Mike may have his architectural design contract for you all to review at your September meeting and it would be fine for you to enter into that. You can enter into a contract with me to do your environmental, which I actually have already done. It's done, it's in the can, we've gotten all of our information. And then the grant writing and the income survey that we're gonna talk to about those costs unfortunately, and you see down there where it's that additional ineligible cost. Unfortunately, the grant will not allow you to use your local funds to pay for the grant writing services or the income survey because they consider those pre-development costs and not project costs. So aside from the $120,000 that you're gonna be putting in, you're gonna need to come up with $5,500 more. And hopefully that may be at a general fund or what have you that you can put into that to pay for those ineligible costs. So, as Rich kind of brought up and Jenny indicated, all of these projects have to meet a national objective. And we've talked about that before, but there's three different types of national objectives on a federally funded project. It's either an area-wide benefit to a low-mod population or it is an elimination of a slum and blighted area, or it's an urgent need. This project, because it benefits the people, we're not taking down a nasty building or anything like that, it's gonna fall under the national objective of benefit to low mod. Now, the issue with that is, is that we have to first look to see the statistical data that through the census as to what they, you know, what they think the percentage of Culver's population is low to moderate income. And based upon that data, it's like 37.8%. And that's always been kind of the case that we've had here in this community. The only way that we can dispute that is if we do an actual income survey. We say, we don't agree with that for whatever reasons and we request permission to do an income survey. We've done several that, we've actually done at least three in the past, the 15 years that I've been with you, we've done three of them. And unfortunately, they're only good for four, five years depending upon how you start the date. But it's a five years now is the actual rule from the date that you started. The one that we have on file expired a year ago. We were able to use it for the boat, for the beach lodge and for the park project as it was still good. But then in that year and a half hiatus that we've taken, it expired. We did try to ask Oprah that, you know, saying, hey, there's a lot of people in Marshall County that utilize this park, could we utilize that income survey? And unfortunately, we're not gonna be able to because it's too broad of a beneficiary. They, you have to hone down on the primary beneficiary pool. And that means that this project will primarily benefit those individuals living within corporate boundaries. So we're going to need to do another income survey and that is the cost of the $3,000. What we will do, and we've done this in the past, is we, because of the time delay, I used to send it out by mail and then get as many responses back and then we'd go door to door. But because of the time crunch that we're kind of under because we want to get this in and the fact, so I think what we would prefer to do, if that's okay with you, is we're just gonna do it door to door. We're just gonna walk off the streets and try to get this busted out as soon as possible. And what I will do is once I can get some cohorts in crime, because I'm too old to walk the streets by myself anymore. I like to drive the car and have the young ones jump out and I keep track of things. So once I can get a team of people pulled together and kind of have an idea, as I would anticipate that we will try to start that right after, maybe the weekend after Labor Day and then try to bust it out in that weekend and then maybe come back a following week. But once I get those dates kind of confirmed up, I would like for the town to maybe put something out on your message boards so that, that, and, you know, I don't necessarily know if it would be who best to put anything in the newspaper because I don't know how many people really pay attention to that. I think mainly on the message boards and I don't know, any other ideas?
We have to do a lot of traction on social media and.
Yeah, like the Facebook pic, pardon?
Send out a notice with the water bills.
You can just indicate.
Indicate that there's a survey.
Right, and the bottom line is that not everybody in town will be surveyed. How it works is that Karen has provided me a list of all of your water utility customers that are located within the corporate boundaries. And we've eliminated all the businesses and churches and all of that, so it's just residential properties. And I think it was like 950 somewhere in there, it's in an Excel spreadsheet. And then what I do is that I have to do that number in. And it told me that, I believe, we need to do about 250. So of the 950 customers you have, 250 will be randomly selected. We'll go to those houses, try to get the information. And we try three times, if we don't get a response from them, we then can go and take the next batch of people to do the fill-in. So it won't be everybody in town that'll be surveyed, it'll just be those that have been randomly selected, like I said, yes.
Are you eliminating seasonal restaurants, residents?
Well, here's the situation with that. If they are seasonal, the bottom line is, is that they're still considered, they own a piece of property. They could live there full-time.
But they may not be there when you approach them and it will be always.
My whole thing is, is that if they come up, I will go there to their house. And if nobody answers, then we replace them with some, we gotta try three times to get a hold of them. And if they're not there, then we can replace them with somebody else. And will, you know, more than likely would be a full-time resident, which quite honestly, that behooves you to do that, this survey when those folks aren't here.
Now, what is the method of collection, is it purple? Is it that you give them a sheet of paper, they fill it out, put it in an envelope and give it back to you sealed? Because a lot of people are very tenuous about this.
And.
I used to be in research.
So, right. So what I do is I, we have name tags, we will put some, first, that this is going on and why it's going on. We then walk to the door and we say that, you know, who we are and why we are there and tell them a little bit about the project and that, you know, in order to qualify, we have to conduct a survey and there are a couple questions on here that they may not, if they don't feel comfortable answering, they don't have to. So basically what I ask them, there's three questions. It's just, the first question is, how many families reside in your household? And so typically that's gonna be one, but like for instance, if my adult daughter, who's now an independent, files her own tax return, she lives with us, that's two families in that house, or if my mother lived with me. So then we would try to, if they were home, we would try to get a survey from them, but we don't have to. We will do, how many families are in there? Then I say to them, in your family, how many people are in your family? Are you a family of one, or like with my husband and I, it'd be two. So I, two people. Is your combined income over or below? And I give them a number. They don't have to tell me exactly how much they make, they just say below or above. And if they choose not to answer, that's fine, we just put no response and then I use a replacement for them.
So what is that number, is it randomly selected for each survey or?
No, what it is, is each county, the federal government has gone through and said, okay, for Marshall County, a family, a family of one, if they, this is, if they make above this, they have different income levels for each, right? And those are done at the federal level as far as they look at the population and all the demographic information. And then they say, this is your median household income.
Oh, the median's what you use.
So it's the median household income, but it's been randomized even more so, well, not randomized, but spread out even more so because we have median household income. But then they do, what's the median household for a family of one, two, three? So each of those numbers, the smaller the household, the smaller the amount, the larger it goes up. And, you know, I don't know the range right now, they change, those numbers change every year.
I get it.
And so I'll have to pull them down and see what's the most current at the time.
Okay, thank you.
And utilize that.
Information that you collect, or is it tied to a specific name and address?
Well, it is, let's put it this way, it's not anonymous, but it is very confidential. Their name is not put anywhere on the form, they have a number ID. And so basically what's gonna happen is, is that I'm gonna say I need 250 people. And then I put it into a computer and it randomizes, it gives me 250 between 1 and 950, it will randomize those numbers. And then I take the first 250 and it'll be household one, 48, 920. And then we go and we mark those. So they're not known by their name, they're known by their ID number. And when I go to the house, it has an ID number on the survey forms, their ID number. And that's all we do. So if they ever got to the side, nobody could go and go, oh, that's Rich West. They wouldn't know. The only way that anyone would know is I keep the tabulation of who's name matches web number. And that's.
And Shannon has to prove that was randomized, you can't just pick the 250 moment you want to go to.
That is correct.
Well, the ID number is not tied to an address.
The ID number is tied to the name and address, but I have that master list. And I'm the only one that has that. And then the federal audit people will make sure that the numbers that I have on my list match the numbers on my survey.
Yes.
So, but it's people, and that's one of the things that I feel like it's a little bit, that we get a little bit better participation because I don't live here, they're not telling you, Bill, if they make above or below. They don't know me from Adam, I don't know them, and so, you know. And it's not too intrusive, but there are people that absolutely refuse. And I just say, well, thank you very much for your time. And I check them off the list and I'll replace them with another number until I get the 250 that we need to complete the survey.
Okay, thank you.
That's kind of how it works.
Got it.
All right, all right. So the first thing that we need to do though, is that we have to request that then.
You got a question?
You got a question?
Sure.
Would you, uh, you guys do this? Whoever's helping you do it. Just leave your information in the court's office. People will call us.
Oh, sure.
Yeah, we always know.
I will let them know when I'm coming. I'm going to tell them the dates that we will be here, and so we can put it on social media, that Shannon McLeod, our federal grant writer, and her team will be canvassing the town of Culver. And, and then, and so, yeah, so you, so I mean, like, for what you're talking about, solicitors going, you have to register here at the town. So I will let them know, and you can register me, right? And I could, you can email it, and I'll sign it and say, yes, I'm going to be there. So we're, yeah. So we can absolutely do that, so that, uh, police department will know that, and, and then they'll make sure that they know. Yeah, you will, exactly. I'll make sure that Jenny lets you guys know that, uh, if you start getting phone calls, it's, it's just that crazy Shannon out there. So, um, okay. Well, in order to conduct the income survey, we have to first request permission. That's a new step now. So I put together a draft letter, Bill, that I need for you to sign. And it basically just indicates, I mean, you can kind of look over it, but I said, according to the Hudson's information, it is showing that the town of Culver is approximately thirty-seven point eight-two percent, uh, with a margin of error of eight point three, meaning it could be as high as forty-six point twelve. Even still, we feel that percentage is misleading, given the number of residents in our community that are considered part-timers due to the existence of Culver Academy in the Lake, at Max and Truckee. Uh, additionally, we know that we have, um, and this is standard stuff that we've put in the past, that we have a lot of younger working families here, uh, and that at times, uh, we have people that have issues paying, making their monthly water and sewer bills. Uh, we also have several at the school that are, um, free and reduced lunch. In years past, we conducted an income survey. We met the national objective. As per the two thousand and eleven survey, the figure was calculated at fifty-two point three-one, whereas in two thousand and fourteen, that figure was fifty-seven point six. We have to be at least fifty-one percent. So, and that we indicated that we get, given these figures, uh, within a few percentages, we feel of each other, we feel that the results of the surveys more accurately reflect this through low mod, uh, low to moderate population within our community at large. And therefore, we are requesting permission to perform another income survey. So I can leave one here with you, but if you could sign one of these, then I can get it to the state and get our information.
Motion that we authorize Jim about to conduct an income survey for the open grant and authorize president and council to sign the letter that was just read into the minutes.
And I would like to have an addendum to that standpoint, that after it's been reviewed by Jim. Just take a look at it and. I'm, I'm sure it's okay. That's my point.
Sure. Okay. I'll amend my motion to include after it has been reviewed and reviewed by legal counsel.
Sounds good. Mission, there's a second. Motion's been made by Rich, and second by Dolly to, uh, take Shannon's, uh, income survey request, and let Jim review it, and then authorize me to sign it.
Great.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries.
I also have you motion to approve the, um.
In the contract that you can, so, uh, this, this was just giving us the permission to, requesting the permission from the state. So Jenny, I'm going to leave you with a copy of it, and then Jim, you can take this, and after you review, and then you feel comfortable signing it, and then you scan and email that to me, and then I will forward it to the state. And then the next thing that I have is just the agreement for the grant writing, environmental and income survey services, uh, the, uh, an agreement to do that. And so the total, I'm going to leave these here for Jim to review. But, uh, we're in here, you can see, we've got, uh, for the grant writing services and that. That it's the, the two thousand five hundred, and then the environmental's three, and then the income survey would be three. Of that amount, that three thousand dollars for environmental, that is part of your hundred and twenty local match.
Okay.
And then the grant writing and the income survey, those are those pre-development costs.
Above and beyond.
Yes. So this just kind of explains what we're going to do and when it would be paid. And, um, this, so Jim can take a look at that, and, you know, my whole thing is, if you want to take and, and have this where you can execute it at the September fourteenth meeting, because I'll be back up for that, that'd be fine. So you could just take these with you and bring them back on the fourteenth and make the motion then. I just wanted to kind of give you the heads up beforehand, okay? Or whatever you feel comfortable. Okay.
I don't have any problems with this.
Okay.
You want to take this?
That'd be great if you did. That way I can just get it done tomorrow and get, get the permission to, you know, get things rocking and rolling. Kind of get my key.
And this agreement's not too much.
Agreement is exactly like all of the ones that I've done. It just basically says, this is what I'm doing, and here's how much I'm doing it for. And if you're happy, I'm happy, and we're all good.
Okay, well, and you'll probably get the similar comments that I have on all of yours probably, which is no problem.
Go ahead.
But, but I'll, I'll take a look at it.
Okay.
Yeah, and but the costs do match up. Like I said, the three thou, the three thousand is part of the one twenty, and then the fifty-five hundred for the.
Above and beyond.
Yeah, that is the above and beyond.
We need a separate motion to authorize the grant writing and the environmental text.
I would say after Jim reviews it, yeah.
You can, I can put on the agenda for September fourteenth.
I mean, that's fine, that's what you just said.
That's totally fine, because then that will probably be that, you know, we work together a lot of time.
And that, that's not going to be a problem, but, you know, just.
Exactly.
I don't want people to think that we're rushing something through.
I totally get that, and so that's why, you know, um, I did the environmental without under, you know, because I, but I, like, I wanted to give you time to look at it in September.
Your one page is so different from this.
Yeah, I get you. The letter is pretty straightforward when we're asking permission. This, I'm actually spending your money, so.
Right.
I understand. We'll deal with that. All right, well, that's all I have, and otherwise, I will see you on the fourteenth at the public hearing, and we can take care of the contract then, and probably, uh, have the exact dates to when we're coming out, and we're doing things, and we'll go from there.
Does anybody on council have any further questions for Shannon?
No.
See you on the fourteenth.
I'll see you then, so stay cool. Thank Karen, stay healthy. All right, well, heading home and call me if you need anything.
Safe travel.
Thank you.
Did she give you one of these?
Um.
The contracts? Yeah. She gave me two, so I'll.
Actually, really low piece for income survey and grant. Actually, it's five thousand for each.
Yeah, I, I, I think we probably paid the same fee.
She's done so much for him.
Last time.
Right. Okay. Moving on, budget submission. Karen?
Yep, um, so let me see if I can share my screen. And hopefully those at home have a copy of it. I've already, uh, provided a copy to council. Uh, but basically, what I'm looking for tonight is approval to submit the budget advertisement. Um, right now, we're looking at, uh, eleven thousand, three hundred and thirty-four dollars for Riverboats, two million, three hundred and thirty-seven dollar, two, I'm sorry, two million, three hundred and thirty-seven thousand, six hundred and fifty-five for general funds, sixteen thousand, one fifty-four for local road and street, fifty-three, two forty for motor vehicle highway, three hundred and eighty thousand for park and recreation, a hundred and seventy-six thousand per cum, cumulative capital development. Um, I went ahead and threw in six hundred and three thousand for the grant. That's just to cover the funds in and out next year with the park project. And then, um, oftentimes, the police department has some operation pullover or op, operation DUI. And so those funds are covered. And then finally, I put in, uh, I budgeted for, so that if we get to a point where we need to, we can use the American Rescue Plan funds. And that, uh, has already been received, and that is a hundred and sixty-four thousand, nine twenty-six. Um, there are a number of, you know, um, details that I'm happy to share. But at this point, um, just want to advertise this budget. We can bud, we can advertise high, and we can always come back if we need to. And if it's decided that we need to, um, pull back on the budget amounts, and so we could, um, advertise high and reduce it after it's advertised, but we just cannot increase that amount. Um, and one other thing that has changed since the last time we spoke at the work session is I moved, we have money in the ca, cumulative capital development fund, um, that, over the years, we haven't, uh, spent everything that we've received, so that has a pretty healthy balance. And so rather than pulling from the general fund that we're drawing down on a lot, I thought maybe we could pull some of the equipment costs that the fire and EMS were requesting, and pull that out of the key capital development fund instead of the general. Um, so if you are all, I'm sorry, if you all are okay with that, I would just ask a mo, for a motion to approve the advertisement. I will get that submitted tomorrow, and we will be on track to have a public hearing, a second public hearing, um, on Tuesday, September twenty-eighth, and final adoption on Tuesday, October twelfth.
Any questions for Karen at this time?
So Karen, to make sure I understand what we can increase or not increase after the publication, is we cannot increase expenses, but revenue numbers could change. Is that a correct assumption?
Correct. Oftentimes, we receive more revenue than we, um, than I include in the budget. Um, but that maximum levy, the revenue that we're going to receive from property taxes, that will not increase. Um, and the budget estimates, you're correct. We cannot increase those budget, the spending estimates, we can only decrease it.
Okay, thank you.
Is there a motion to, uh? To go ahead and publish the budget as presented?
I, I, I move that we, um, you've got permission, uh, Karen, permission to, uh, publish the budget of this.
Is there a second?
Second.
Most of them made by Bill Clevinger and second one by Bill Ham to, for Karen to publish the, um, budget as presented. All those in favor say aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
All right, thank you.
Regional stellar plan update.
Um, really, the only thing we have for the regional stellar plan update is what Shannon just already went through with all of you guys. Um, that's our regional project, um, aside from the trail projects, which there's been no change on.
Okay, stellar plan update.
Okay.
Thank you.
I'll apply combined stellar with the town manager report, because each of those projects is within the report. So I'm just going to start at the top of the town manager report. Um, the electric vehicle charging station, Bob and I met with Maykod yesterday. We do now have an approved ADA compliant design, um, that Bob had come up with, and they've approved of it, so now we will need to get a quote to get that work done, because it is going to involve, um, our electric station faces the street, and there, behind it is a sidewalk that has, um, ADA access. So someone can access the charging station back there. But if the driver is, say, a wheelchair-bound person, and they need to access the front of the station, we have to put in sort of a five-foot pad in between where each car would be parked, because it's a two-car station. And to do that, you also have to have the station itself at a certain height that they can reach the lovers. And right now, the way these are built, that's not possible because of the six-inch curb. So we will be taking out curb and putting in sort of a padding, and that's going to require us to spend some local dollars to get that done, because the grant does not cover that. So Bob will work on getting a quote for that, so we'll see progress on that. Next is the pavement crack sealing. Uh, we've been waiting for, uh, the vendor to come back and do the sealing, and that's going to start tomorrow and go through Friday. Um, we believe then that project will be completed, so Karen has already put out notice that north of Lake Shore Drive, that whole area where we did all the paving for community crossings, et cetera, that'll get sealed, um, this week. No changes on State Route ten and Jefferson Street. You've seen the sod go in. We're still trying to reach, um, substantial completion on that project. Lake Max Phase Two, we're, uh, waiting on a schedule, because that, we've been given notice to proceed. That should come from our group soon. Um, Lake Max Phase Three, um, the only reason I'm bringing this up, not that there's been a change on this, but as you guys know, we were trying to get a utility easement to fix the water pressure issues and Fleet Parkway neighborhood and West Harris up there. And we wanted to do that easement with the trail easement that we're getting from Culver Academy. We're going to separate out these two easements, because NDOT will not let us work on that trail easement until we get to Wrightaway. And environmental has to be complete to get to Wrightaway. But in the meantime, we would really like to proceed with the utility easement agreement, because we're going to fix that water issue. We need to do it before that trail gets constructed. Because obviously, that utility line would go side by side with the trail or under it. So in the meantime, um, you're seeing your packet that I gave you earlier, there's a quote uh, that will look at, at the next meeting. I don't expect you to, to review this tonight. Midwestern provided Bob an estimate of what that project would take. So, um, aside from getting the utility easement taken care of, which Jim and I will work on this, this coming week and a half, um, this Midwestern, um, includes the design, the, um, engineering work, the permits, and his expected estimate for construction. Um, you'll see at our next meeting that we're going to recommend that this be the project we use our ARP funds for. It will probably come in substantially lower than what our ARP funds are, but given we kind of want to do one key project to use those funds, as Karen has suggested, um, this is what we're recommending be that project. Now, obviously, we don't spend all of those funds. We have another project sort of on the back burner that we, we will also talk about tonight. But I wanted to give you a heads up on that, and the fact that we're trying to get the utility easements so we can move forward with this project. And we may ask for you to consider voting on that at the next meeting. Um, Slayton Jefferson Trail, that's status quo. So I'm going to skip down to the Dixon Water Tower inspection proposal. This is the bid that I sent you guys over email. Um, you should also have a copy of that in front of you. Um, this is, um, as Rich asked, this is for the water tower on Lake Shore Drive. We do this every four to five years, and this one is due to be done. Gets inspected, cleaned out, and the quote for that with Dixon Water is, uh, listed in the town manager report and also on the, um, proposal. This is not Mill Street. It's not due to be done, which is why we're not giving you two of them at one time. Um, so I would look for a motion to approve, uh, the Dixon contract for three thousand nine hundred and twenty-five.
Is there a motion to approve the Dixon contract for three thousand nine hundred and twenty-five dollars?
Still moving.
Motion made by Bill Ham, second one by Dolly to approve the Dixon contract for three thousand nine hundred and five dollars. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Jim, you've got another business?
Uh, now the project.
Is that my name on there?
Jim Clevinger.
Oh, the guy that did this.
Spells it like you too.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's a conniving that I did. I really don't know anything about it.
Use some inspection for us.
I understand. I'm just kidding.
I want to see you climb the tower.
Yeah. Good luck with that. Let alone go in.
You hit a nine iron over?
Yeah, no.
Uh, next on the list is just what we discussed, the water project proposal from Midwestern. Um, if you guys have any questions that you want us to get to the engineer on that, or, you know, Bob, let us know. It's pretty straightforward. It's a pretty straightforward project. And Culver Academies has agreed that it's fine with them that we do that utility easement as a separate agreement. So they've been really helpful with that. And Jim, I'll get back to you on your message.
Okay, alright, that's alright.
I'll skip the park crossroads stellar project because I think Sheena covered that so thoroughly. Emergency Services. The departments that are here will report. Rich and I are working on COVID policy. Jeff has also worked on a policy for EMS that I floated past Rich yesterday after Jeff and I did some back and forth. We want to iron some things out before we present something to you. It's entirely possible, since there's a three week break here, that we might want to call a special meeting in the event we get something done a little sooner, especially as numbers have sort of gone up.
I think there, I think there's a lot of data and information to collect and disseminate, didn't I? I think it'd be better done in a work session, not a special meeting.
Yeah. Yeah, so we'll, we'll get together and get in touch next week, in case we want to do that. I think that's a good idea. Special event permits, I do have one. Still don't have all the Fall Fest, you know, beer garden stuff worked out, so that one hasn't come back to me. But the September eleventh, the St. Mary's Church would like to have a picnic. You'll see in my report that they do want to block off a key area behind the church, which involves Lewis Street, Plymouth Street, and William Street. And Knights of Columbus are going to help with cleanup afterwards, so basic picnic at the church.
There's a motion to approve the special events permit for the St. Mary's Church picnic on September the eleventh?
Still moved.
Second.
Motion made by Phil Clevinger and seconded by Sally. To approve that, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
I will stay, I will stay. I'm a Christian there. I don't know if that makes us sort of conflict events or not.
Both same sign. The vote is four, one, four and one abstentions.
Thank you. Moving on, broadband task force, we're having our next meeting on September seventh, just an FYI. Economic Development Initiative. I have worked with Cheryl this week to start getting together a plan for Monday, Tuesday. She's been extremely busy because of ready grants in her county. They are still submitting those through end of September. So I kind of threw the idea at her of if we're not organized enough to do the event Monday and Tuesday, to let me know. I'll let you know when I hear. If we don't finalize this tomorrow, then I'm going to recommend we go to September because I don't want to come back from a long weekend without us really being ready for it. So I'll, I'll get with you guys on email tomorrow on that. We haven't heard yet from the MCCF grant application. That's probably a few weeks out. They usually interview the people who applied for that and we haven't been interviewed yet. Annexation of Tamara Road property, I already sort of let you guys know, we're setting up a joint meeting, the CRC and Council. And we'll continue progressing with that. And then our emergency services agreement, I've highlighted that because Bill and I and Jeff went over and met with Dr. Bird as well as the CFO, Brian.
Baker.
I can't remember the last name. And well, they're going to sort of digest everything we gave them and get back to us. So we'll follow up with them in a week or so, just to see where they're at with that. But had a productive conversation with them. We threw a ton of information at them. And they had a lot of good questions. Jeff is working on getting some additional data to them as well. So that's all I've got between stellar and town manager report.
Did you lock down a time on the twentieth for the joint session?
I think it'll be before the CRC meeting, which is at thirty, five, so probably would fourish.
That just, I think all that, I just wasn't sure if there was a for sure time.
Does, you think four o'clock would work, Sally, with the CRC members?
I think so.
Because technically if we do executive, we can't do it after their meeting, right, Jim? It has to be before? Or is that the same as year?
No, you can do an executive session either before or after.
My problem is they can't predict how long their redevelopment meeting will go. We have a quorum of council members in the audience.
Are you anticipating CRC taking action at their regular meeting on, on topics to, I mean, it's just an informational kind of thing with
Yeah.
everybody present.
And I think hours, plenty of time. So let's plan on four o'clock for now. Does that work for all of you?
Yes, I am. Thank you.
On what date, twenty?
September twentieth, yeah.
The reason I ask that is, is I, county's having a work session that afternoon for the special lit, so, but it's supposed to be over at three, so.
Okay. Okay. Alright, let's plan on four for now.
Did you get a response from John Rogers? I don't know if that would cause. I don't think it would schedule.
Yeah, I can check when. I haven't heard from him now. He just said he'd make an effort to be there. But time wise, he didn't say anything. But I didn't put four o'clock out there either, so I'll see what they say to that.
Monday and Tuesday, this is upcoming thirtieth and thirty-first. What, how long is that?
Well, the plan was to have some subgroup meetings and then a full stakeholder meeting. And so we were going to do the full one in the evening on Tuesday. We were going to do the sub ones throughout the day, Monday, Tuesday. So, but I, I'm having, I have a feeling we're going to postpone it to late September, early October.
I have some conflicts both days.
Yeah, and I'd really like as many council to be there, so. And I think there's some other, we've got some other conflicts to be on.
Okay.
Anyhow. Great, I'll do four o'clock on the one meeting. I'll check in with the CRC before we commit to it and get back to you guys if that needs to change. Anything else?
Anything else? Thank you for your report. Thank you for your report. Department head report, EMS, Jeff, are you on?
Yes, I am, Bill. How are you today?
I'm sorry.
I have just two things for the board tonight. I've received back from the state this last week, our renewal papers for our provider for EMS for the state. So we are certified again, once again, for two more years. So that was a a process to get done, but it is all completed this time now. So there's no other needed information in the state and we're good to go for the next two more years. The second is, is I want to thank the CRC Board once again for their investment in EMS. Their investment in public safety with fire and now with us shows that their commitment in public safety and their commitment is just as much as the council here tonight is. And I thank all of you for the the effort and the time and the cooperation and support you have all been given and especially here recently with the CRC. That helps us out tremendously.
Anything else?
That is it.
Can you tell me when your next going to be here in Culver? You know?
Tomorrow.
Okay, thank you very much. Fire, Terry, are you on?
Yes, I am. I really don't have anything tonight. Just hopefully the fall goes as good as the summer does here.
Hey, Terry, just FYI, I'm going to put the St. Mary's permit in your box. It's missing your signature, but I think you'll be okay with it.
Okay, I thought I signed that one already, but I'll be in tomorrow.
Okay, just send it back to me when you're done.
Alright, thank you.
Thanks, Terry.
Yep, you're welcome.
Wayne?
No, I don't have anything for you.
Thank you. Amber, are you on? For Park?
I am, I'm on. Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
The only reports I have first, I just wanted, I don't know if Shannon is still in the room. Even if she's not, I just really wanted to thank her for her involvement on this project. She's been tremendously helpful for myself and I know Ginny too, as we are navigating all of this and as it was kind of thrown into our lap, but we're really happy to have her on the team helping us out. I also want to piggyback off of the remarks on behalf of CRC. In case anyone isn't aware, CRC committed those additional funds for the park project, so half of them from the match will be coming from the park budget, which you guys approved of. So I wanted to thank the Town of Culver and CRC for their continued support of quality of life for the Town of Culver. So thank you very much. Outside of the regional cellar project, in case you haven't seen it, the funds that were raised with the GoFundMe in memory of Alex Prey were put to use. Our new basketball hoops are up and they look gorgeous. So if you haven't had a chance, be sure to check it out along with the new planner boxes and team benches. That's all up right now. So I'm of course still working to get that court sometime finished. Plans are in progress, but right now we're really happy with where we're at and with the upcoming progress to be made. That's all from me.
Amber, I have something. The library would like to hang a banner on the fence down there for Stories and Stones, which is their cemetery walk on September eighteenth. The fence right above the amphitheater and they'd like to put it up and say right after Labor Day and take it down the day of the event, which is Saturday, the eighteenth from one until three. Do you have a problem with that?
I don't have a problem with it. I think traditionally it's gone through council approval, so as long as you guys are fine with it, I think the rule is generally a week to have it up. I think that's how it goes, so it's fine by me though.
Okay. Does council have an issue with putting the banner up down there?
No, it would, so go up after Labor Day.
It will go up to Labor Day and come down on the eighteenth.
I, I would move to authorize the library to post a banner on the wrought iron fence by the amphitheater in the park from after Labor Day through September eighteenth to advertise their.
Stories and Stones, thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
A second. Motion made by Rich, seconded by Phil Clevinger to authorize the library to place a banner on the fence above the amphitheater advertising their Stories and Stones event. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Thank you for covering that. Because I had my little sticky net that says Stories and Stones, don't forget.
Thank you. Utilities, Bob, are you on? Bob Porter?
I don't think he's on and he's, he wanted me to go through all those.
Everything you've gone through, okay.
We're covered for Bob.
We're covered for Bob?
Yep, and he passed his inspection report.
Before you leave utilities, and we were talking about it earlier, the situation on the corner of Madison. Next street. Again, have we got another water being taken?
I don't know. Sidewalks through a per town.
I think it's on the private property because it didn't come up to town hall. I can check with Bob, but.
I think it's the bed and breakfast.
It wasn't, it, it did not. I don't know about that, is what I'm saying.
All I know is there's bricks and then there's concrete. I mean, it's, it's down a lot further than than normally thought.
Alright.
It's not, it's the bed and breakfast problem.
We'll get a, we'll get a report.
We're good.
Just to know.
Okay.
Good point.
Thank you.
Boards and commissions. Chuck's not here, is Chuck, are you on?
No, he's not here.
Is there a report for playing commission or?
We have a technical review committee meeting to review some site plans coming up tomorrow.
Okay.
And that's really sort of what's on his plate. There's four of them. So, which is quite a few for us.
Sure.
And then we, we have been working with some people on separate issues like an electronic message board sign, some other little things, but and then we do have some rest nuisance letters going out, which aren't really related to Chuck, but if you see one that you think you want to ask me about, I can tell you if I sent them one this week.
Redevelopment.
We have a couple small committees that are working on tip properties, checking value of some of them. And I wanted to thank Jeff and Amber for thinking as for.
Oh, you're up.
Our.
Contribution, support.
Good. Tip property project that Sally was talking about, Bill and Paul and I have been going through all of those and learning a whole lot and coming up with a list of what we might remove or add. We've reached the stage of where we need to discuss if we need to add any of them. And then they're going to be meeting also with the county assessor and working out some, some details on that.
And updating all those tip properties.
Yeah, it's been a really good exercise. We literally went one by one by one by one through every one of them, took notes. It, it helped me learn too because Paul and Bill have been educating me a bit on how tip works.
Tree commission, anyone online for the tree commission?
I don't see Mike.
Let's move on. Clerk's report?
Yes, I have two claims that I need approval that are over five, two thousand dollars. One is Culver Youth Club and that comes, it's for five thousand dollars and that comes out of Riverboat. And that was committed to last year during budget time. The other one is United Healthcare Insurance Company and that's for two thousand three hundred and seven dollars and eighty-nine cents. And I'll give you a little bit of explanation on that. Last April, May, when the federal government was sending out money, we received that amount as a provider, the EMS provider. It came with a letter stating you're getting this money and that was pretty much it. I've just recently gotten around to doing some research on what we could use for the money or what we could do with the money and found out that it needed to be spent by June thirtieth of twenty twenty-one. So I called them and asked if there was any way to do an extension. They said no, and it needed to be returned. So that's what I'm doing because I really don't want to get in trouble with the federal government. So if you would be so kind as to approve those claims, I will get those paid and hopefully stay out of harms way.
The motion to approve claims over two thousand?
I'll make a motion to approve over two thousand.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion made by Sally and seconded by Bill Ham. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed or abstain? I'm going to abstain because of I'm helping, I'm not on the board of Boys and Girls anymore, but I am doing basically some consulting work in situations to address the board. So I would say that Karen is or one of those.
Got it. The second thing I have is a request to send an engagement letter with Peterson Consulting Services. And this is to update the twenty-one capital assets. I thought I, see. That is for one thousand eight hundred and fifty dollars. And this is something that the State Board of Accounts is now including in their federal audit. Is, it's a new item that they're reviewing capital assets. So we want to make sure that those are updated accurately.
I move that we authorized Karen to engage Peterson to do an update of our capital asset inventory for the amount of one thousand eight to do an update of our capital asset inventory for the amount of one thousand eight hundred and twenty-five dollars.
Motion made by Rich, seconded by Sally that we prove an engagement letter for Karen to execute with Peterson Consulting Services for eighteen hundred and fifty dollars, which is the same amount as what last year. All those in favor say aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Okay, and the last thing I have is just to let people know that Town My Garage Sales will be September twenty-four and twenty-fifth. If you want to participate, I will need to have your information no later than Tuesday, September twenty-third. So I think people are starting to slow down and clean up because I've had three inquiries today. And that's all I have.
Thanks a lot, Karen.
Can I ask? Karen, on the last item on the report I'm looking at had to do with, not something you're doing as clerk treasurer, but personally for billing. And I don't have a problem with that. Good idea, conflict of interest. Just, I don't know how much you've told the board, but maybe to elaborate, I'm assuming what you're doing is you're sending out bills on behalf of the East Shore and like or Southwest Lake Macs Conservancy districts. Is that correct?
Actually, right now, it would just be the Southwest Conservancy District.
Okay, but you're you're just sending out billing information. They they pay what, a monthly, quarterly, some kind of a deal like that?
Yeah, they pay monthly, and then there's a bank that collects the funds, and then I would post payments to each of the customer accounts.
You're only doing the situation where you're gonna get money coming in and money going out and issues.
If that was the case, I wouldn't be doing it, so.
I I assume that's what it was. I'm familiar with these kind of services, and I just wanted to make it public so that somebody's not gonna second guess you down the line.
Right, and that's where I was gonna complete the conflict of, we're still kind of nailing, ironing out some details. So I was gonna present the conflict of interest statement next time.
Yeah, no problem, but I just, perfect, thank you. That's, I just answered my questions and or make some information public.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you, Karen. Attorney's report?
Jenny's mentioned that she's got me involved in a couple things, and other than that, I have nothing to report.
Is there anyone present for a utility shut-off ordinance violation? Anyone online for that? Are you seeing none? Time for citizen input. Anyone online for citizen input? If so, please state your name and address and have at. Any none online? Anyone in the room? Are you seeing none? Moving on. Counsel issue? Alright. William, nothing. Sally?
Nothing here.
I just want to wish Mr. Clevenger a happy birthday.
It would have meant more to him if you'd have sang to him, too.
This is being rebroadcast. No, thanks.
Unless Wayne can carry it, too. Okay, that's all I have.
Oh, there are people online saying happy birthday to you, Bill.
Thank you all.
A motion to adjourn? All those in favor say aye.